Good afternoon. This is the council meeting of March seventeenth. And just have few words of opening. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section two, three, eight, subsection three point three of the municipal act and section sixteen point six point two four of the City of Woodstock procedure by law. This meeting is being live streamed to the city's YouTube channel and a recording will be posted on the city's website following the meeting. The meeting will also be broadcast on Rogers TV. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings and minutes page of the city's website. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of their webcam when moving a motion requesting to speak and when a vote is being taken. And if a member of councils is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they are requested to inform the clerk. I will now ask that the councillors turn off their, turn on their screens. Thank you, councillor Peter. You'll have the resolution for the closed session. Oh, just a minute. No, I'm sorry. But it'll be the disclosure of conflict of interest. Councillor Accioni.
Yes, I had a conflict of interest in the closed session. A respect to agenda item four, one proposed disposition of land.
Thank you. And the next is the closure disclosure of new business. Councillor Schadenberg, I understand you have a disclosure of new business. Are there any objections from council on this motion to be withdrawn? Councillor Schadenberg, would you like to speak to them?
Yes, I will speak to the fact that I am going to withdraw the motion that was noted as being number three A on today's city council agenda. After a contemplation and whatnot, I've decided not to go forward with the motion at this point in time, but certainly reserve the right to possibly at some point to bring it forward.
Thank you, councillor Schadenberg. I want to thank you for requesting approval for additional remuneration for me while taking on all the duties of the mayor in my position of acting mayor. I know I'm extremely busy with the task at hand, but I am here to serve the community the best I can and look forward to doing so for as long as it is expected of me. Now, that is not to say that I will not be calling on other members of council to step in for me when double booked with meetings and engagements. So when I call, please don't hang up the phone on me. Thank you. The minutes of the meeting from March the third, councillor Peter, you had that motion?
Yeah, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Talbot that the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on March third, two thousand twenty-two be adopted.
Any questions or comments on that? All in favor of that motion? Thank you. That's carried. Additions to the agenda. We don't have any presentations. We don't have any delegations. Our first delegation is Jennifer Dunn, executive director, the London Abuse Women's Centre. Jennifer, go ahead.
Good afternoon. First of all, I would like to thank you for allowing me the time to speak before you today. And before I begin, I want you to know that I am aware that Mayor Birch has taken a leave. But the London Abuse Women's Centre felt it was still important to speak to you today for the purpose of discussing the impacts of men's violence against women and girls on women and girls and the community. I submitted my presentation to council, but as I verbally present today, it will be a little bit altered. The London Abused Women's Centre, or LOC, is a feminist organization that supports and advocates for personal, social and systemic change directed at ending male violence against women and girls. LOC is a non-residential agency in London, Ontario, that provides women and girls over the age of twelve who have been abused, assaulted, exploited and trafficked with immediate access to long-term trauma-informed counselling, advocacy and support. During LOC's last fiscal year, over forty-six hundred women and girls were provided with individual counselling and group support. This includes over eight hundred women and girls who reported being trafficked or were at risk of being trafficked. During the same time period, LOC also answered over five thousand phone calls for support. I am here today to talk to you about the impacts of violence, abuse, assault and exploitation on women and girls. The issue at the root of the concern here is men's violence against women and girls. And in nearly every province or territory, women are more likely than men to be victims of physical or sexual violence. It takes an enormous amount of courage for women and girls who are being abused or assaulted, exploited or trafficked to come forward and seek help, let alone report what happened to them to the police. The experience of women and girls can often be very intrusive and very traumatic. It can be so traumatic, in fact, it can leave a woman in a state of being unable to properly navigate life. It is common that women and girls who have experienced violence will struggle with lifelong impacts. Impacts can include physical and mental health conditions such as depression and post-traumatic stress, sexually transmitted infections, absence from school or work or social isolation. When speaking about young women and girls specifically, patriarchal and sexist messages are taught consistently through media, school, families. The media plays a powerful role in teaching girls that their primary worth comes from being sexually desirable to men and makes it seem acceptable for men to have and maintain power and control over women. Young women and girls aged fifteen to twenty-four are nearly five times more likely than women aged twenty-five years and older to have been physically or sexually assaulted. And currently LOC is actively providing to, a service to a hundred and four young women and girls, twenty-four years of age and under, with the youngest of whom is thirteen years old. The London Abused Women's Centre believes the work must start with the goal of shifting the social culture that normalizes men's violence against women and girls for future generations. In February, the community found out that Mayor Birch was charged with assault, sexual assault and sexual assault, sexual assault with choking. And on the twenty-fifth of the same month, there was a report in the Free Press that Mayor Birch had taken an indefinite leave. We are happy he has stepped aside during this time, but more needs to be done. Woodstock City Council, taking a position of innocent until proven guilty, in the media says that the victim in this case is lying. Women and, women and girls in our community are feeling betrayed. To that, we propose the following recommendations to Woodstock City Council. Woodstock City Council consult with violence against women agencies in Woodstock and London to arrange ongoing training and education around the issues of men's violence against women for its members. Women and girls in our community deserve better. They deserve to know that they are not alone and they deserve to be believed. The truth is, women and girls are at risk for violence for no other reason than the fact that they are women. And we know from, for certain that with awareness in the form of training and education, a plan to shift the social, social culture that normalizes men's violence against women and girls, men's violence will be reduced and the protection of women and girls in our community will be improved. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kate.
Just through the chair to the presenter, thank you for coming forward. And just so, I think another issue that needs to be promoted much more and public awareness is the human trafficking of young women too. There is an issue even in this area, people think there isn't. But coming forward with these information to councils and speaking, I think it's a, it's a big issue and I thank you for coming forward. And also, I appreciate your comment that, the stand that we took at innocent till proven guilty, but that is the judicial system. We have no choice. We will be held liable if we say anything else and it doesn't matter what the charge is against anybody, anytime. I mean, there's victims in every single charge when it comes up. I do appreciate that this is very difficult. It is also very difficult for a victim to come forward. And I am sure you have the stats, it's even harder when it gets to trial for the victim to carry through. It is, and I'm, I don't want to say anything to get myself in trouble legally wise, but I'm sure all of us on council have great support for anybody that comes forward and the support that we would give them having to go through this process because it is a different, very, very difficult process. So just from your stats, how many women actually end up going, are able to go through? Because it is so, so very difficult process to go through to the final, to get to trial and have to face the accuser in court. Is there, like, is there a, do you have the stats? How many women are able to follow through with that? Because I know how difficult it is.
Thank you councillor for your, your statement and your, your question. I don't have a specific number for you, but what I can tell you is that you're right. It is very difficult. And once it gets to the place of going through the court system, it's more difficult because oftentimes the victim has to face her accuser. The victim is left to, or the court is left with the victim to, or sorry, the court is left to rely on the victim for her testimony. And it can take so long, the amount of time for it to even get to that point, that oftentimes a woman wants to get on with her life. And so a woman's journey to justice, whatever that looks like for her, sometimes, you know, we've experienced women coming in our center here and receiving counselling, advocacy, support, and they choose to do that over going through the court system because of the length of time it takes and because of how traumatic it is. You know, when questions, very specific questions are being asked about how you were sexually assaulted or what happened that day or what happened that night, nobody wants to be revictimised by that two years later. And so I'm sorry, I don't have a specific stat for you at the, at the tip of my tongue here, but it is very, very difficult.
So just a final comment, I, once again, I'd like to just thank you for coming forward. We do have some very positive advocates and do a lot of job, do a very good job in the community. Diane Harris looks after two of our agencies here and she is phenomenal. I think the entire community is very supportive and always very generous whenever they need help. And once again, thank you for coming forward. But just so the public realizes it's very, very difficult. And as you mentioned, quite often the woman thinks that it's okay what is getting, getting, being done to her. And if the person has some kind of, you know, if they're a person of power or position, quite often they think, well, if I just did this, then it would, this person would like me. So I get it, I understand it and thanks for coming forward.
Thank you.
Are there any, councillor Accioni?
Thank you, through the chair, Ms Dunn. Thank you so much for your presentation. I get a little emotional with this all the time. It's, I spend some time in a domestic abuse home with my family. My mom moved away from my dad. So hats off to all those women out there that have the courage. My mom's my biggest hero because she took five of us kids out of a relationship that was very difficult. So please don't for a second think that I don't appreciate or, or a lot of us have different stories. We know how bad this can be, but like councillor Tate said, unfortunately, there is a lot of legal obligations as well where we got to be a little bit more tight lipped. But trust me when I say I'll support, support any domestic abuse home or anything at all. I'm very lucky to have two very strong daughters as well as a wife that will not take anything and encourage anybody to get away, break away if they can. And again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much councillor.
Councillor, councillor Schadenberg?
Thanks a lot again from our acting mayor through to Jennifer Dunn. Just wanted to point out the fact that I'm much in the same boat with Mr Accioni talking about the fact that my wife was sexually assaulted in a workplace, probably seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years ago. So we've certainly gone through that in our household as well. Dassamun Ingamo and of course Woodstock Police Services, but I guess the whole idea that from what you talked about, Ms Dunn, is the fact that there's certainly resources out there, stand up and go out and, and cry on someone's shoulder and go out to the police services or wherever you need to, to be able to be heard and, and not sort of fall down as they sort of say during, during your process and, and get assistance where you can get assistance to, to move forward. So I thank you with that. And there's sadly, and obviously say sadly, a necessity for DASSO and Ingamo and, and the London Women's Abuse Centre and so many of these other organizations required and needed in our community these days. Thanks.
Any other comments? I would just like to thank you Jennifer for your presentation. It's very important, the work that you are doing and, and the other organizations that have been mentioned here for the protection of young girls and women of all ages. So keep up the good work and I certainly support you a hundred percent in what you're doing and what the other organizations are also doing. So thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you very much for your time today, everybody.
And we'll move on now to the, the next delegation is Sean Benacker, supervisor of transportation, Frank Gross, manager of transportation and waste management services and David Simpson's director of Public Works from the county of Oxford. Go ahead gentlemen with your presentation.
I'll just jump in, deputy mayor Lauder, while Frank's pulling out the presentation. Certainly thank Woodstock County Council for the opportunity to delegate this morning, sorry this afternoon, in regards to a, a local petition we received from Woodstock residents along Oxford Road fifty-nine between the CPR rail line and Oxford Road seventeen. So we've received that direction through our county council back in two thousand twenty-one. We've, we've carried out our operational review of road safety along that road segment. And Frank is here today just to provide a lot of the technical findings that we've already discussed with city staff as well as the Woodstock Police and the local OPP. So on that, I'll pass it over to Frank.
Yeah, thanks David. Thank you, acting mayor Lauder and Woodstock City Council for having us today. Sean Benacker, transportation supervisor, was scheduled to present today, but unfortunately wasn't able to make it. So I'll present on his behalf. A copy of our presentation was, was shared with, with the, with your council agenda. So I won't go through all the details, but just wanted to speak to some of the highlights of our findings and recommendations. And I will share the screen. Are you seeing the presentation okay? And as I scroll through, are you seeing it scroll through? Excellent, thank you. So I'll jump right to the slide showing the map here in our study area. As David mentioned, our study area was from Oxford Road seventeen at the roundabout to the, to the bridge over the CP, CPR tracks and the Thames River. The speed zones are shown here in, in orange at the sixty kilometer zone, so primarily sixty kilometers from the roundabout to, just up to the, the bridge then where it changes to fifty as, as it moves into the, into the city there. The, the road, road cross-section from, from the Thames River Bridge to Lakeview is an urban cross-section with sidewalks and curbs. And then from Lakeview to the roundabout, excuse me, it's a urban cross, or sorry, a rural cross-section with gravel shoulders. And just the week of April twenty-ninth and two thousand twenty-one, we collected speed data at the two locations shown here. Twenty-four hour, seven day speed data and you can see the eighty-fifth percentile speeds shown in red range from sixty-nine kilometers per hour to, to eighty kilometers per hour. We reviewed the historical collision, historical collision records through the study area over a nine-year period from two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-one with a total of thirty-seven collisions. With, with a collision rate of point eight seven per one million vehicle kilometers, which is under the provincial average that was reported in two thousand eighteen. We did, we did see a number of collisions that were rear-end type collisions and those can be attributed to vehicles slowing down or stopping to make intersection turning movements through, through that area. I will skip to the slide. So what we did, we did an assessment of the posted speed through that area using Transportation Association of Canada guideline criteria. So we, we divided it into the, in the two distinct sections from, from the CPR underpass to Lakeview Drive and then from Lakeview to Oxford Road seventeen. And for both those segments, the criteria recommends a seventy kilometer hour posted speed. So that's a difference of ten kilometers of what is currently posted there. Summary of our findings, the northbound operating speeds just approaching, sorry, from northbound speeds just between Lakeview Drive and CPR underpass were marginally excessive. And then southbound operating speeds approaching Lakeview Drive were, were excessive. As I mentioned, the posted speed was ten kilometers less than the, the recommended speed through, through the TAC guideline criteria process. And as I mentioned, we did identify some, some collisions, a number of collisions, rear-end type collisions related to intersection movements. Our recommendations for immediate implementation, we aren't recommending a speed reduction to fifty kilometers per hour as per the, the residence petition at this time. However, we are recommending electronic speed feedback signs just north of Lakeview Drive for southbound traffic as well as for northbound traffic just, just south of Piddock Park Drive. And as part of our two thousand twenty-two capital works program, we are planning intersection improvements at the three locations shown there at Piddock Park Road, at Fairway Road and at Ridgewood, Ridgewood Drive with, with churning lanes there. Though those aren't intended to be traffic calming measures necessarily, but they, they will have a traffic calming effect with the, with the left turn lanes and, and the lane shift. So that's, people be considered to, to slow traffic down as they, as they move through those intersections. Future considerations, so again, if through regularly scheduled road reconstruction, we will consider whether there's a need to urbanize that section of road from Lakeview Drive to Oxford Road seventeen to the roundabout and then ongoing sharing of our, our data with police to, to assist with their enforcement measures. Automated speed enforcement through a potential countywide program and community safety zone designation. And then community watch program is something that the city could consider implementation of. Just briefly on communities, safety zone designation in two thousand twenty-one, county council adopted a, a warrant process, a two-step process for identifying community safety zones on county roads. The, the first warrant or the first step is identifying areas of special concern, schools, community centers, recreational areas and senior areas. And then areas that meet, meet that first warrant then would be further analyzed based on those, those traffic data, risk measures, collisions, volumes, pedestrian volume, speeds, et cetera. So the area through, in the study area north of Lakeview Drive would meet the, the first warrant with the, with Cowan Park on, on the east, on the east side there. So, so we will be undertaking a countywide review of, of all similar areas to see if they meet the community safety zone designation. And we will be seeking county council approval at the May twenty-fifth county council meeting. Prior to that, we will, we will undertake an extensive public consultation campaign. The measures are currently posted on the county website on Speak That Oxford and we have shared that, that link with, with Woodstock staff to share on, on the Woodstock website. And then we'll also be issuing mailouts to all the residents in that area, explaining what our recommendations are and then offering them an opportunity to comment and to even delegate to county council if they wish to do so. So following county council approval and bylaw, bylaw enactment, then we proceed with the installation of the electronic speed feedback signs and then the, the intersection improvements that that work is, is underway and planned for two thousand twenty-two construction. And then as always, we will continue to monitor, monitor these areas going forward to determine the effectiveness of our, of our measures and then consider additional measures, measures if necessary. That's the end of our presentation. Stop sharing here. I've got to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I don't see any, so thank you for the presentation and I know I heard, had people come to me about that petition. So I'm, I thank you for this and we'll see where it goes from here. Thank you very much. We'll continue on. Next presentation is Virginia Armstrong, manager of Woodstock Downtown BIA. Go ahead, Virginia.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. It's a great pleasure to be here to present to you the downtown Woodstock BIA budget for two thousand twenty-two. I did submit a copy for correspondence, so I'm here today. If you should have any questions in regards to our budget, that was approved at our most recent board meeting on March the tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Virginia. Are there any questions through to Virginia about her proposed budget? Does some look like, oh councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, thanks to, through our acting mayor too of Virginia. We've had some success in the past with sidewalk days historically, as I grew up in the city of Woodstock and then adding to, to being a bit of a music street fest and I've added to, to in the second weekend of August. Do you think enough, enough has passed through pandemic times and whatnot to be able to hopefully reintroduce a street fest type atmosphere where people can sort of sit outside and listen to music as you had three different stages set and, and whatnot throughout the Dundas area? And, and even I know the Southgate Center was greatly involved in it, but the Sunday Car Show as well.
Thank you for that question councillor Schadenberg. I appreciate that. We did at our last board meeting pass a motion that we were going to table summer street fest this year until all certainty of COVID is, is passed us. It's such a big investment and such a time-related event to have to plan for that we felt that it was very high risk for this year yet until we're certain that we're out of this pandemic. So instead, what we have come up with, we did do a pop-up market last August in Market Square and it was very, very successful and we were able to work with all the protocols of COVID and reduce the risk of any, anyone being exposed to COVID in any form. So we've taken that and what we are planning this year is running the pop-up markets, love downtown, pop-up markets in Museum Square and perhaps other areas in the downtown where this is a grow-in event. But we're going to do it bi-weekly on Thursdays and we're going to run it from noon until eight, eight PM. We will be incorporating a lot of the elements of street fest, so we will have music, dancing. We're hoping this will tie in with our outdoor patios. We're encouraging more people to visit those patios and our local businesses because they certainly need the support of everyone to grow their businesses and get them back up and running and back up to normal. So we're going to do that in a bigger way and have activities. We've been collaborating with a lot of groups and we invite any local groups to give us a call. We're going to be sending out application forms so that we'll have vendors. We have early on and Woodstock Public Library collaborating, collaborating with us on having a children's activity area every week. We're working with the museum as well and some activities. So it's going to be a great event and we're really looking forward to it. It's going to be a little bit different twist. It's not going to be the big weekend deal, but it's going to spread it out from June till September, which is going to give us lots of activation in the downtown and hopefully generate a lot more pedestrian traffic throughout the season. So that, that's where we're at for this year. But we have not tabled, like, we have not given up on street fest. It's only tabled for next year. So we will look at that again.
Any other comments or questions? Any other uh comments or questions through to Virginia? Thank you, Virginia. That sounds quite interesting. So um we'll go back and now um look at the resolutions for the delegations. The first delegation uh Jennifer Dunn, executive director of the London Abused Women's Center. What's your pleasure on that uh that uh motion on that item? Uh, Councilor Accioni?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that Woodstock City Council received the presentation from the London Abused Women's Centers information and thank them again for the presentation.
Councilor Tate? Second that? All in favor of the motion? Thank you. That's unanimous. Uh the next one is the presentation from the County of Oxford regarding the speed limits on uh fifty-nine highway north of the city. Council Accioni? And uh C- Councilor Tate?
Okay, thank you. The Woodstock City Council, I move that Woodstock City Council supports the recommendations presented by the Oxford County Public Works Department regarding speed and road safety concerns on Oxford Road fifty-nine from Oxford Road seventeen to the CP Railway underpass.
Thank you. And Councilor Tate has seconded that motion. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. That's unanimous. And the next uh one is for Virginia Armstrong, manager of the Downtown Woodstock BIA. Councilor Talbot?
Thank you. Moving myself, that Woodstock City Council approved the Downtown Woodstock BIA Board of Management two thousand and twenty-two budget as presented.
Thank you. Good. Uh, Councilor Petter, that seconded that motion. All in favor? Thank you. Now we'll move on to planning. And I'll ask for Ms. Hashler to do the first presentation, and that's at eleven eighty-five and twelve oh one Devonshire Avenue. Uh, uh, Councilor Tate, would you like to make that motion?
I'll make motion that Woodstock City Council support the application to amend the official plan submitted by one nine nine one nine seven six Ontario Inc. for lands legally described as lots twelve and thirteen, plan sixteen twenty-four, except part one forty-one R dash seven six four one in the city of Woodstock to res- to redesignate the subject lands. Medium-density residential to facilitate the development up to twenty-six town home, house units on the said lands and for the Woodstock City Council approved in principle, the zone change application. Submitted by one nine nine one nine seven six Ontario Inc. for lands legally described as lots twelve and thirteen, plan sixteen twenty-four, except part one forty-one R dash seventy-six forty-one in the city of Woodstock to rezone the lands from special zone commercial special local commo- commercial zone to special residential zone to facilitate zone three, sorry, to facilitate development up to twenty-six townhouse units on the said lands and for that comments received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Could I have a second for that motion? Councilor Accioni, thank you. Go ahead. Uh, Ms. Ashler?
Thank you. So this application for official plan amendment and zone change is as Councilor Talbot pointed, or sorry, Councilor Tate pointed out. It's to redesignate the subject lands from low-density residential to a medium-density residential as well as to rezone the lands from a special local commercial zone to a special residential zone three, so an R three special, and that would facilitate the development of the twenty-six townhouses on the subject, townhouse units on the subject lands. Just scroll down here. And so as you can see, it's on the northeast corner of Lansdowne Avenue and Devonshire Avenue. As council may recall, this application or this property has gone through a number of zone changes over the course of the last uh decade or two decades even. Um at this point in time, or so, so most recently, the applicant for, for the, the previous owner, I should say, was proposing to put a commercial plaza on the subject property. And at this point in time, they're looking to put residential on the subject property. Um in staff's opinion, we feel that the proposal for residential is, is very fitting for the area. There's a mix of residential uses in the area. There's single detached, semi-detached, and then there's also townhouse units to the immediate north is a church. And then, as you know, there's Devonshire to the south, which is a is a um arterial road in the city. And so it's, it's designed for higher amounts of traffic. As staff are not concerned with the amount of traffic that will be generated from the state as it is only twenty-six units. Um and we feel that this area is, is designed for, for an increase in, in um units and, and traffic. We also feel that uh going from a commercial use to a residential use, there, there's a good chance that there could have been more traffic generated from the commercial use. And so with respect to compatibility to the neighboring property owners, we feel that uh this is likely fitting for the area and appropriate. Uh the types of units are two-story and three-story townhouses. We feel that that's also maintaining character of the area. Um we talked a bit the other night, on Monday night at the public meeting about the neighboring property had, property owner had concerns with respect to privacy, uh landscaping, traffic. And uh in the applicants had indicated that a, there is a, a hedge. My apologies. There is a hedge that follows the eastern lot line, and that will be maintained, maintained, which will help with the with any sort of um buffering and privacy. The applicant also indicated that they are willing to install fencing along the, along the um eastern, I believe, northern and uh and western lot lines. We'll look into the western lot line with respect to traffic safety and whatnot. Um and then there were also concerns with respect to parking. The applicant is proposing to provide the amount of parking that is required under the zoning bylaw. There are two spaces that'll be provided per unit in addition to the six visitor parking spaces. Um and then there were questions regarding snow storage and garbage removal. And generally, in types of developments like this, the um the garbage removal is the responsibility of the owner, and those details, though, are are um further explored through the site approval process. As well as snow storage, there generally is a provision for, for snow storage on the site. As the snow storage accumulates, accumulates, um if it's, if it exceeds the amount that can be stored on the site, then it's usually trucked away. Um and again, those would be addressed through site plan approval. I believe that one other concern that, that a neighboring property owner had was with respect to lighting. And so generally, again, through the site plan approval process, we address uh lighting through a photometric study to ensure that there is no lighting that is is glaring into neighboring property owners' bedroom windows and um general living space areas of their houses. And so we will also look into that. We're satisfied that the site is large enough to accommodate landscaping, parking um buffering, as well as there's sufficient space for grading and drainage. Um and so in light of our review, we feel that this application or both of these applications can be given favorable consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions through to the planner on this application? Councilor Petter?
Uh, not really a question to the acting mayor, not really a question, more of a comment. Uh seeing that I, I live right around the corner from this area. I am glad to see this uh property, hopefully, finally get developed. It's become quite a nice or abandoned buildings and falling down fencing and garbage and you name it. So I'm sure the uh people that live in my neighborhood and around the area will be happy to see something happen there. I hope it happens quickly. And uh I do think that the residential is better than the commercial that it was uh originally zoned for. I just hope it's done quickly and that it doesn't get bogged down and doesn't happen again like the other two or three proposals. Uh, that's all I got.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Thank you. We'll have the, the vote on this application. All in favor of the application? Thank you. That's unanimous. We'll continue on to the next application, which is Sierra Construction Woodstock Limited, seven sixty-three Athlonav. And uh I would like to have someone, that's a, it's a big uh resolution here. So um go ahead, uh whoever would like to uh tackle this. Councilor Tate?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council support the application to amend the county official plan submitted by Sierra Construction Limited for lands legally described as part lot thirty, plan sixteen hundred and part lot eleven, plan sixteen thirteen, parts two and three, forty-one R eight one nine four in the city of Woodstock to redesignate the subject lands from low-density residential and business park to special me- medium and high-density residential and open space to facilitate the development of plan of subdivision. And for the Woodstock City Council proven principle, the zone change application submitted by Sierra Construction Woodstock Limited for lands legally described as part lot thirty, plan sixteen hundred and part lot eleven, plan sixteen thirteen, parts two and three, forty-one R dash eight one nine four in the city of Woodstock, rezone the lands from prestige industrial zone to special residential zone for special prestige industrial zone passive use open space and active use open space to facilitate the proposed draft plan of subdivision. And for that, any comments received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to the planning matter. And for that, the Woodstock City Council advised county council that the city supports the application for draft plan of subdivision. File number S B eighteen dash eleven eight submitted by Sierra Construction Limited for lands legally described as part lot thirty, plan sixteen hundred and part lot eleven, plan sixteen thirteen, parts two and three, forty-one R dash any one ninety-four in the city of Woodstock, subject to the following conditions of draft approval, which there are thirty-one conditions.
Thank you. Second for that. Councilor Accioni, thank you, Councilor Tate for that. Um, Ms. Ashler, would you go ahead and um address this application?
Thank you. And thank you, Councilor Tate. I think my work's cut out for me now. So this application for our official plan amendment, draft plan subdivision approval, as well as zone change, is to redesignate lands from a former gravel pit, um which are currently designated for business park industrial type uses. And the applicant is looking to redesignate those lands to facilitate a draft plan of subdivision, which contains six blocks. The six blocks will include a part, I'll just actually move to the next slide. It's a bit easier to see. So there's a, a one and a half acre park block, which will be used for a community park for the area. And then there's a residential block, which will include three twelve-story apartment buildings, uh two six-story apartment buildings and one four-story apartment building, which will result in a total of five hundred and fifty-two apartment dwelling units on the subject lands. In addition to that, there will be three business park industrial um type blocks. They're already for, for anyone that's familiar with the area, there already is a two-story hydroline call center building that has been constructed on the property. Um at the time, it was constructed with the, the block um dimensions in, in mind. And so it needs relevant setbacks uh for the prestige industrial zoning. And then the applicant has also indicated on their concept plan that uh the other two blocks are intended for a four-story hotel as well as a two-story medical clinic. Um and then the final block will include the stormwater management pond, which will be dedicated to the city, or it'll be turned over to the city once it's been established, as well as the park block will also be turned over to the city. And then finally, there is uh one municipal street that is proposed for the subject uh draft plan subdivision, which will also be turned over to the city uh at some point in time. And so overall, the application spent a considerable amount of time going through the, the various requirements uh for designating these lands. But so I won't spend too much time on them, but basically uh the subject lands are employment lands at this point in time, according to the provincial policy statement. We feel that based on the fact that this is a former gravel pit, has a significant slope to the site for anyone that's been out there, you're, you're well aware of it. Uh so it doesn't really lend itself to being ideal for industrial purposes or industrial development. As a vacant site that's been sitting vacant for uh decades at this point in time. I believe that uh there was a pit license that was closed in, I think it's two thousand and nine on the property. However, I believe that uh the applicant indicated that they stopped extracting aggregates already back in the eighties on this property or um and it's a total of thirty acres. So in our opinion, it's, it's a, it's an underutilized state. Uh the residential development that's being proposed for it um is, is high in medium density, and the medium density is being proposed around the periphery of this site. Uh the four-story building is being proposed adjacent to existing residential. Um and it's maintaining the proposed setback that would be required for a four-story building. And so we, we don't feel that uh that there will be privacy issues with respect to, to this building. We feel that there can be adequate buffering and, and landscaping between it and adjacent properties. With respect to the twelve-story apartment buildings, based on the slope, the applicant has indicated that they don't feel that, that again, there will be a shadowing issue or that these, these types of buildings will, will have it um a great imposition on the residential developments in, the existing residential development in the area. That being said, we will be requiring shadow studies at the time of site plan approval. Um and we will work through other finer details at that point in time with respect to site development. Because I'm, I'm sure council is, is aware. Uh the applicant also provided a traffic impact study as well as a noise impact study and a functional servicing report in support of the subject applications, and uh staff are satisfied that the development is, is appropriate based on, on these studies. The traffic impact study as well as the noise impact study are still going through um peer review, and there's been several revisions going back and forth. The applicants worked hard to, to appease the, the peer reviewers. Um and so we will continue to work through that. We've included those as conditions of approval. Generally speaking, though, we, we did a review also of um of the requirement for more residential land and, and more residential units. And as council will likely recall, we did a phase one comprehensive review a few years ago now, and it indicated that the city is in need of, of more residential land. Based on the fact that we don't feel that this is appropriate for industrial lands, we uh, we do feel that it's, it's an appropriate use of the lands uh for residential purposes and uh, and it's um can easily accommit, accommodate the proposed development at hand. So in light of that, we recommend approval of these applications as well. Oh, sorry. It's, sorry, I should just, I, I told council I would point this out, and, and I apologize, I glazed right over it. We did receive um comments from neighboring property owners with respect to privacy. Um we are satisfied that we can address those through site plan approval. In addition, we, we received more kind of correspondence. Uh I think right before the meeting, actually, from a neighboring property owner um that owns the hotels to the east uh with concerns um with regard to the proposed hotel building on uh the subject plans. In light of that, the, the zoning, that zoning for the hotel is in place. It is a prestige industrial zone, and that's currently what the entire property is zoned. Uh and so that's, that's already a permitted use. In addition to that, the planning department does not do impact analyses where we see how many hotel units are in the city and how many were required and, and whatnot. So I believe that was the concern of, of the neighboring property owner, but uh that's, that's not something that, that we comment on.
Thank you. Andrea, uh, Councilor Schadenberg?
Thanks. I just wanted to add through to our senior planner Andrea that the uh agenda for today on page ninety-one, if anyone's kind of following this at home, has that three D dimensional uh view of the, of the uh neighborhood as well. And that was something that Mr. Cornwall, the planner from Sierra Construction, had introduced to us on Monday night that kind of really depicts the lay of the land, so to speak, because of the fact that uh the three larger, taller structures are the bottom, so-called, of the uh cliff or the, or the, or the land, lay of the land there, so to speak. So anybody who wants to see a sort of a three-dimensional one on page ninety-one, it wasn't one of the pictures that you had uh shown there today, Andrea. So uh that's just really the comment I want to make. It really did does depict nicely what this would, what, what this would look like. And anyone who was sort of on boundary adjustment anyone who was sort of on boundary adjustment committees in the past will certainly know the pressures we see of using all the space that we currently have within our current boundaries, whether it be for commercial or industrial or shopping plazas or residential. And let's use up all the land we've got as much to the best of our abilities. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Atchoni.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. And just general statement, like the last application, I'm just really glad this is another location that is going to get cleaned up and made look look really good, a good use to the planners. I commend the developers for kind of the mixed commercial and residential property here. So thank you to them and their expertise, I'm sure will do a great job. And adding the park was a little bonus for that neighborhood as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions through to the planner? I'll call the question on the vote now. All in favor of this application? Thank you. That's unanimous. Now, the next one is for the application for consent and minor variance, Paul and Nancy Chambers and Henry and Rena DeRue, four thirty-five Devonshire Avenue. Could I have a mover on that? Counselor Talbot? And a second. Yeah, go ahead. And Counselor Tate, second.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council advised the Land Division Committee that council supports a proposal to sever the subject property, together with the noted easement, subject to the following six conditions. And B twenty-one ninety-nine eight, there are nine conditions. And further, City Council advises Land Division Committee that the city supports the approval of minor variance application, A twenty-one thirty-two eight, submitted by Henry and Rena DeRue, for lands described as part lot sixteen, Plan three fifty, city of Woodstock, as it relates to I don't know if I need to read that. One is relief, and then as the proposed variance, there are four different conditions there. I don't think you needed all red. Did you? Your mic is off.
No, I don't think so. I think that's fine. And that second on that motion was Counselor Tate. And so go ahead, Andrea, on that application.
Thank you. So this application is for the creation of a residential lot. And so basically, what the applicant is proposing to do is they're proposing to do a lot addition from four thirty-five. I'm looking at the rate. Yeah, four thirty-five Devonshire. And adding it to the property to the immediate west. And then the applicant, sorry, the the applicant then is proposing to sever those lands, so the which would be considered the large lands into two separate parcels, and they would be proposing to build two single detached dwellings on each of the per for a single detached dwelling on each of the parcels. And this is for lands at on Devonshire Avenue directly east of Oxford Gardens. The applicant then also is proposing a minor variance for each of the frontages on each of the lots. And that's from twelve meters to eleven point three meters, and that would accommodate each of the the proposed dwellings. In addition to the to that, the applicant is proposing an easement on the center of the two. Here we go. An easement on the center of the two parcels. And that would be based on on the design that the applicant is proposing for the each of the single detached dwellings, the applicant's proposing to construct the single detached dwellings to the front of the property, and then to have carriage house-type detached garages in the rear of each of the subject properties, which would maintain the character of some of the historical buildings already found on Devonshire Avenue. So that's why they're going to have it, they're going to have the shared driveway with the reciprocating easements. So so the subject lands are designated low-density residential. The two single detached dwellings are in keeping with that with the designation. The lands are are zoned R one, and and so the applicant is also able to maintain all of the relevant provisions of the zoning with with the exception of of the reduced frontage. That said, staff are satisfied that the reduced frontage can be can still accommodate the adequate space for each of the building, for each of the buildings, as well as parking and landscaping, and also maintain the relevant setbacks. So in light of our review, we would recommend that these applications be approved, subject to the conditions that we've included. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions through to Andrea regarding this application? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote on that application. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. And our last application is an application for a draft plan condominium at fifty-nine Reece Street. Could I have a motion, Counselor Petter and a second? Counselor Atchoni, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Ashler.
You want the motion first, Connie?
Oh, yes, sorry.
I move that Woodstock City Council advised County Council that the city supports the application for draft approval of a proposed condominium submitted by Uplift Property Developments, Inc., file number CD twenty-one oh four eight, prepared by N A Geomatics, Inc., and dated December ninth, twenty twenty-one, for lands described as lot six and seven, block eleven, Plan thirty-four in the city of Woodstock. And further, that Woodstock Council advised County Council that the city supports the application for exemption from the draft plan of condominium approval process submitted by Uplift Property Developments, Inc., file number CD twenty-one four eight, prepared by N A Geomatics, Inc., and dated December ninth, twenty twenty-one, for lands described as lots six and seven, block eleven, Plan thirty-four in the city of Woodstock. As all matters relating to the development have been addressed to the site plan approval process and a registered site plan agreement with the city of Woodstock.
Go ahead, Ms. Ashler.
Thank you. So this application is for draft plan condominium approval, as well as draft plan condominium exemption. And so as council may recall, or sorry, and these lands are located at fifty-nine Reece Street in our central area or downtown area. Council may recall at one point in time, I believe it, yeah, August twenty twenty, there was a zone change on the subject lands to accommodate the three-story multiple attached unit building. It basically looks like a like a three-story apartment building, but for all intents and purposes, the zoning bylaw interprets it as an as a multiple attached as multiple attached units. And so anyway, at this point in time, the applicant is seeking to create each of the interior units as exclusives for for condominium use. And so basically, what that means is that each unit will be separately conveyable. In addition to the units, there will be a balcony or ground floor patio, which will also have exclusive use to the various units. And then all other, all other areas on the subject property are considered common elements, the parking areas, garbage, storage, et cetera, landscaping, that is all considered common element. And so this application went through site plan approval. It was granted approval on May twenty, in May twenty twenty-one. And then the applicant would have gone through, would have signed a site plan agreement with the city, and it would have been registered on title. And so generally speaking, in those cases, we recommend that the application also be given the exemption, the condominium exemption, because there are no conditions that need to be applied to this proposal. And they can go ahead and create each of the units to be separately conveyable. So because they have received the zone change, as well as site plan approval, the each of the units and and the subject development that is, it's currently still in their construction, is in keeping with the relevant provisions of the the C five dash nineteen zone. And the application has gone through the site plan agreement process, and it's registered on title. So in light of that, staff had no concerns with this going through to being having draft plan of condominium approval, and each unit being separately conveyable. So we recommend that council approve this application as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions through to Ms. Ashler regarding this application? Hearing none, I'll have a vote on that. All in favor of this application? Thank you. That's unanimous. Moving on now to consideration of correspondence. And the first piece of correspondence is from Counselor Schadenberg. And I will ask for a second on that motion before you present it, Mark. Counselor Tate? Go ahead, Counselor Schadenberg.
Yeah, thanks. Whereas municipal governments provide essential services to the residents and businesses in their communities, and whereas the ability to provide those services is negatively impacted by exponentially rising insurance costs. And whereas one driver of rising insurance costs is the legal principle of joint and severable and several liability, which assigns disproportionate liability to municipalities for an incident relative to their responsibility for it. And whereas the government of Ontario has the authority and responsibility for the legal framework of joint and several liability. And whereas the premier of Ontario committed to review this issue back in two thousand and eighteen with a view of helping municipal governments manage their risks and costs. And whereas the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, on behalf of municipal governments, has provided recommendations in this source document to align municipal liability with the proportionate responsibilities for incidents, and then capping awards. Now therefore be resolved that the Woodstock City Council does hereby support AMO's recommendations. And further, the Woodstock City Council does hereby call the Attorney General of Ontario to work with municipal governments to put forward a plan, a plan of action to address joint and several liability before the end of the government's current term, so that municipalities can continue to offer high-quality services to their communities.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Tate?
Yeah, just through the chair, just a comment, because this is what I do all the time, but I will tell you, it doesn't matter what reforms are made. Whoever's got the deepest pockets pays. So even if they do a reform and they adjust the liability, any lawsuit that comes forward, the city's the one with the deep pockets, even if they're not whole liable, there's all kinds of cases, they're still sued. So I think the big issue, and I think all anybody insurance will tell you, the issue right now is with the courts and the awards they're awarding, and everybody's suing now. It's like the US. So I fully, fully appreciate doing this and sending it forward, because the insurance costs are are getting out of hand for municipalities. But the truth is, that's who ends up paying regardless who's at fault, unfortunately.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, I'm going to ask if Ms. Heavenfries would like to speak to this issue also. And here, oops. Oh, how come this is gone here? Come this way. Just a minute here.
Pardon us, counsel.
Just a minute. I don't know, I can't get, it's gone.
Gary, why don't you sing during the intermission?
It's not coming back.
Okay. There we go. Okay. Technical difficulty there. Sorry, Ava. Thank you. Madam Chair, through to the request for comments. So joint and several liability is a legal term. Counselor Tate referenced this as well, but it's a legal term for a responsibility that's shared by two or more parties during a lawsuit. So it makes all parties in the suit responsible for damages for up to the entire amount awarded, regardless of the assignment of liability. So if one party in the suit is unable to pay, the others named must pay more than their share. So it allows the plaintiffs to pursue full payment from the party with, as Counselor Tate said, with the deepest pockets. So you may also hear this referenced as the one percent rule, as even if a municipality is only found to be one percent liable for an incident, it can pay up to ninety-nine percent of the damages awarded. So although it isn't the only factor associated with rising municipal insurance costs, it certainly contributed to an increase in insurance rates in recent years. As council will recall, Woodstock's facing a sixteen percent general liability insurance increase and a twenty percent transit and auto increase for twenty twenty-two. And that will be part of the budget deliberation later today in the meeting. So as such, the AMO recommendation presented in the correspondence is quite timely for us, and staff would recommend that it be supported. Thank you.
Good. I'm back in. Okay, thank you. Okay. Yeah. Okay, I'm new at this, so. Okay, they, we've heard the explanation on why this is brought forward. And so I'll call the vote on the support for this. Thank you. So moving forward, all in, all in favor, I'm sorry, all in favor and it's accepted. So the next piece of correspondence is a is a letter that I received from the age-friendly opportunities is sponsored by the Ministry of Seniors and Accessibility, who provides sixty thousand dollar per grant for three key delivery deliverables, a needs assessment, community profile, infographic, and an action plan. This letter came to me and asked for the support, my support, and I thought that I thought that I would like to bring it to council who asked for your support. So could I have a motion to accept this request? Counselor Atchoni and a second, Counselor Schadenberg? And all in favor? Thank you. So the next request is the twenty-two walk for Alzheimer's, May twenty eighth, at ten thirty. Could I have a motion on that? Counselor Atchoni and Counselor Petter, second. Go ahead, Counselor Atchoni.
Okay, thank you. Move by myself. The Woodstock City Council approve the request to display two-sided road signs advertising the IG Wealth Management Walk for Alzheimer's from April first, twenty twenty-two to May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, at the following locations, Dundas and Lansdowne, Van Sitterd Ave fifty-nine in Lakeview, Norwich Ave four oh one and Finkel and Juliana.
Thank you. Are there any questions on that? I'll ask for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. So we have no staff presentations, no mayor's report, no councilor's report, no department reports. Administrative Services is the administrative twenty twenty-one remuneration expenses. And could I have a motion on this? Counselor Tate and Counselor Petter, second.
I'll make a motion that we received the report as information.
Thank you. All in favor of that motion? Thank you. Unanimous. Now we get into the big part of the meeting, which is the budget. So I will what is your pleasure on this? Would you like to go? To go, like to speak to them?
I was going to make a motion to approve the suggested motions to amend the base budget. And if somebody wants to take one out, they can, but I was going to move the motions from one to sixteen. They're all listed on the agenda, so the public is well aware of what they are if they want to see them. But if somebody wants to take one out, that's fine.
Counselor Petter?
I just want a second to Counselor Tate's motion.
Okay, is there any discussion on on that motion at all? Counselor Schadenberg? Counselor Schadenberg?
Just as clarification, you're willing to approve all 16 of these motions right now? Is that what you're asking? Or do we have any specific questions on any one in particular?
We can, we can ask if there's any questions that you would, anyone would like on, on any of those 16 motions.
But my motion is to approve all of them, Counselor Schadenberg.
I would have a question or maybe a clarification needed on number 16, because I know we had the ML consulting report on, on the pay equity structure within the city of Woodstock. Appeared at council basically twice now, both, both as a presentation and when the ML consultant was at, at our meeting. But I would want to know if I could ask a question specifically on that one, maybe through to our CAO or through Diane Campbell.
Yes, go ahead.
Though the one thing that we talked about, but at that point in time, maybe as, as a premise for was that the salary ranges would be based on, on specific jobs being in specific brackets or specific holes up and down on a chart, obviously. And that's what they would get paid. And but into some cases, there would be a pay equity jump for somebody. I just wanted further clarification for myself and for those viewing. For example, would that also be based on years of experience for somebody, say someone's been in the company for three years versus 13 years or, or 23 years as to what kind of a pay equity jump they may be required to, or they're based on their experience or their, or their past resume to be able to make that five, up to a 5% jump immediately?
Madam Chair, through to Counselor Schadenberg's question, this would probably best be directed to Director of Human Resources, Laird Crooks.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. It with, with respect to pay equity, what pay equity does is it looks comparatibility within the pay ban. Pay equity is the comparison of a, what's called a female job class versus a male job class. And that there, if the job classes are considered to be essentially equal, then the female job rate, rate should be within the band. It does not have to be at the exact same level as the male comparative within the band. And that's where the experience would be taken into consideration. Because there is a mechanism to allow the individual over time to move through the band. And, and essentially that's how pay equity works. And with respect to the compensation plan presented, that was one of the tasks for the consultant was to ensure that the plan was pay equity compliant.
Thanks. That answers my question. Thanks, Mr. Crooks.
Okay. Are there any other questions on one to 16 of these motions? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote. All, all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Now we continue on to the next, the miscellaneous resolutions. And could I have a resolution, the first one of being regarding the downtown security? Could I have a motion on that? It's, is there a mover on that one? Hearing none. We'll move on. The next one is for additional operating costs for the market center west end be approved? Is Counselor Tate?
I'll move that the request for 10,000 for additional operating costs for the market center west end be approved and for that the 2022 capital budget be amended to include 150,000 for renovations to the market center west end to be financed for the reserve for capital projects.
Thank you. Could I have a second on that, please? Counselor Schadenberg? Are there any questions on that? All in favor of that motion? Thank you. That's moved. Improved. The next request is 20,000 from the Economic Development Department for a film attraction strategy be approved. Counselor Accioni? And the seconder on that? Counselor Talbot? Okay, would you like to read that motion, Counselor Accioni?
Yes, absolutely. Move that the request for 20,000 from the Economic Development Department for a film attraction strategy be approved?
Thank you. Any questions on that? I'll call the vote. All, all, all in favor of that motion? Thank you. That's unanimous. $50,000 for a physician recruitment forgivable loan program be approved. But I have first, a motion on that. Counselor Accioni and, and second by Counselor Talbot? Go ahead, Counselor Accioni.
I move that the request for $60,000 for physician recruitment forgivable loan program be approved?
Thank you. Are there any questions on that motion? Counselor Accioni?
Just more of a statement, of course. I know so many people are looking for doctors and we have to take all advantages. And I know a lot of areas around here offer similar programs and some a lot more than even this. So I'm hoping this at least helps and brings more doctors to the city.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I'll call the vote. All, all in favor? Thank you. That's, that's passed unanimous. The next motions. Regarding special events, Counselor Tate, that's, this is your motion. Could you go ahead?
This is the special, sorry. Do I have a seconder?
Oh, sorry. Counselor Accioni?
That the special events budget be amended to includes 90,000 for Cal Palooza on a date to be determined and 30,000 for Art in the Park on July 6th. July, sorry, July 16th to be financed as followed. 25,000 from the Reserve for Entertainment Cal Palooza. 95,000 from the Slot Machine Reserve Fund, funds committed in prior years for grants.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Tate?
Yeah, just a comment. Actually, I'd like to thank actually David Hilterly for bringing this to my attention that this wasn't in the budget and considering everybody, whatever, all the citizens of Woodstock have gone through the last two years, it's very appropriate, I think, that we do this this year.
Thank you. Counselor Accioni, I think you had your hand up.
I did. And I basically wanted to say thank you very much also to Counselor Tate for bringing this forward and bringing it aware because I too believe that citizens of Woodstock certainly deserve to get some normal back again and hopefully get some festivals in as well. So look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Petter?
Yeah, I'm in support of this as well, but I'm just wondering if somebody could answer what the 95,000 from the Slot Machine Reserve Fund does to the Grants Committee? And maybe I'll get that answer further down in the agenda because I know there's a, a grant statement. But if somebody happens to have that answer, I would appreciate it.
I'm going to ask our treasurer, Ms. Campbell, to answer that.
Right. Acting Mayor Lauder, through to the councillor's question. There are some committed funds in the Slot Machine Reserve that were committed for grant purposes. Couple different years that they were set aside. So there's over $200,000 there. And we figured that there's sufficient funds in that reserve in order to fund the Cal Palooza event.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? I'll call the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. The next motion is Counselor Tate. Could you go ahead and that motion?
Can I get a seconder?
With second or could I have a second on that? Counselor Schadenberg?
Whereas the Tillsenberg Regional Airport, CYTV, referred to as the regional airport, is the only year-round operational air dome in Oxford County with a paved runway measuring at 5,502 feet in length. And whereas the regional airport was originally constructed to support flight training by the Canadian Royal King Air Force during World War II. And for many years, the federal government leased the airport to the town of Tillsenberg in 1981. The town of Tillsenberg took over full ownership and administration. And whereas the regional airport will be the host for an airshow event in September 22 honoring our regional healthcare providers, emergency service personnel, and essential workers reaching the world, featuring the world famous Canadian aerobatic team, Snowbirds. And whereas the Snowbirds airshow and other supplemental aircraft displays and activities are being planned, will be enormous tourism attraction for Oxford County. And whereas the county of Oxford declined the town of Tillsenberg's requested funding in support of the regional airport. Therefore, be it resolved that Woodstock City Council approves a grant of 20,000 for the town of Tillsenberg in support of the 2022 airshow event to be financed from the tax stabilization reserve. And so this won't be going directly to our tax, this tax bill. The reason I brought this forward is for some reason, county council will not approve any funds to this. The amount that I have put in that would have been the amount that would have been Woodstock's share if it had gone through. I think it was very important this year that we approved this with the Snowbirds coming, as our CEO in discussions with him said, this, this is a regional airport. This is an asset for Oxford County, for Woodstock, for all our communities. And I think it's very important that we help out this year, this year only because of the Snowbirds.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Accioni?
I'm just, I'm not sure who this goes to. Maybe to Mr. Currie. Have we ever done anything like this before with the airport? I'm curious. I don't know of anything. No. I see people nodding.
Through to Counselor Accioni. No, I do not believe so.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, just through the chair. And that's why I said this one year and this one year only because of the Snowbirds. It's, it's a county issue with, for some reason, all the money we spend over there, they will not fund any money to this airport. And this is an asset in this community. So this would have been the amount that we would have paid towards it. But I wouldn't bring it back another year, but because of the Snowbirds is the only reason I brought it forward.
Thank you. Are there, is there any other discussion or are there any questions through to Counselor Tate? Okay, I'll call the vote on this. All, all approve this motion? Thank you. Those who don't approve on it, but Counselor Talbot. So that's five to one on that motion. And that's passed. Thank you. So the next one, motion is the 27, 25 cent increase on transit. Could I have a motion? On that one, Counselor Schadenberg? And second, please. Counselor Tate? Go ahead, Counselor Schadenberg.
A motion that a 25 cent increase to transit and pure transit cash fares with the corresponding increases to all transit passes be approved? And further, the levy for transit and pure transit be reduced by the estimated 25,000 in the additional revenue.
Are there any questions on that? Counselor Accioni?
Yeah, just more of a general statement through the chair. I was initially going to not go in favor of this, but with recent fuel prices and everything else, I don't see how we don't without having a huge hit at the end anyway. So to keep better services, unfortunately, I think I'm going to have to okay, be okay with this as well.
Thank you. Counselor Schadenberg, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, I believe the last time a price increase happened was in 2016. Somebody could confirm that or not. But the other thing that's very important is by adding an extra bus to the system, the bus route has become that much more important to the city of Woodstock and hopefully used that much more in the city of Woodstock. And Jerry, Mr. Accioni alluded to the gas prices, well, maybe more people will be taking the bus to, to work or to shopping and whatnot. Now the the price has gone up very, very small amount compared to what the price of, of gas is doing and the price of insurance for that matter.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on that? Thank you. I'll call the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. And the next one is the provincial dedicated provincial gas tax. Could I have a motion, Counselor Tate? And a seconder, Counselor Petter? Go ahead, Counselor Tate.
That council approve a one-time contribution to the transit budget of 150,000 from the dedicated provincial gas tax reserve fund.
Thank you. Are there any questions on that? Or comments? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. So the next one, I think I might have to ask a question. On, is that? Okay. Just wanted to check on that resolution. So could I have a res, a res, the motion on the resolution to accept the budget? Counselor Schadenberg? And a seconder? Counselor Accioni?
I, I'm sorry, Acting Mayor Connie. I want to maybe possibly, maybe as a point of orders, go back to number 17 and, and understand why there was a disagreement not to, not to go forward with that. It's, it's one of those things where you can weigh the pros and cons and think about every angle on it. But motion number 17 that didn't get any approval or anybody make the motion at that point in time. I guess it could have been, but I
You can make the motion, Counselor Schadenberg. You can make the motion and bring it forward if you want.
Okay, I'll do that for sure. Thanks, Counselor Tate. That the request for 170,000 for downtown security by law contractual services be approved?
Could I have a seconder? Counselor Talbot? And are there any questions on that or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All, all in favor of that motion? It did not, did Mark, you didn't have any comments? Did you, first of all? No. Go ahead and I'll call the, call the vote then. All in favor? Thank you. That's, that's approved. Okay. Now, I better ask for that vote again. All in favor? All those in favor? Okay. And all those opposed? To that's, that's for two in favor of that motion. Thank you. Now we'll get to the approval of, is there anything else in the budget that I ask that? Okay. We'll go with the approval of the budget resolution. So Counselor Talbot? And a seconder, Counselor Accioni? Go ahead, Counselor Talbot.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve the 2022 Revenue Fund Budget as amended and that the Director of Administrative Services be directed to prepare the necessary bylaws for council's consideration.
Any, any comments now? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Counselor Tate?
Just a comment, which all of us make every year and just want to thank staff for all their work and the hours that go into it from all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schadenberg?
I know some people are going to take a look at some of the additional dollars that the city Woodstock's spending, but it didn't take long for me to go back to the building reports. The building permit reports from the engineering office to know that in 2019, there was 141 new residential units out of the city. In 2020, there was 302 of building permits approved for the city. And in 2021, the number was significantly lowered to 104. But it goes to show you the city is, is growing and therefore we need more revenues and more, and more services to, as they say, cover the bases to continue the services for the city of Woodstock.
Thank you. Counselor Accioni, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you. Through the chair and just a general statement as well, just to thank you to all the staff. I know they worked really hard to keep this at an absolute minimum. And really appreciate the work they put in because this is tough. And again, the way the city has grown, like Counselor John Berg has mentioned, we don't have much of a choice at all but to grow with it. So thank you to all the staff for their, their work.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I'd also like to thank staff for all the work and uh it makes it easy for us when we um. Come to our budget meetings that uh everything is um is explained to us. And uh it's up to us to make the final decision, but uh they do a great job and I just wanted to thank all of them, so. Uh councillor Petter.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh through, through the acting mayor, I just wanted to thank the uh city staff as well. Uh, but I mean, we know there's going to be increases to the taxpayers' uh. Uh taxes and I know we all hate to do it. But uh in this day and age with COVID and the insurance, the cost of insurance and the cost of gas, it's. It's just inevitable that you gonna have these increases and I know there's gonna be an uproar probably when the final numbers come out. Hopefully, they won't be too bad, but uh I I hope the taxpayers understand that uh some of these things are totally out of our control. Thanks.
Thank you, any other comments? Okay, I'll call the vote on that. All, all approve. Motion, thank you. Unanimous. So the next one is the Finkel Street pedestrian bridge over the Canadian National Railway, could I have a motion on that? Councillor Atchoni. And a secondaire councillor Petter.
Thank you, move that Woodstock City Council receive the report regarding the status of the Finkel Street pedestrian bridge as information.
Thank you. Any questions on that or uh councillor Petter?
Through the acting mayor, I was just wondering if Mr. Dehan would like to make a little Coles note statement on this because there's. Quite a bit of interest in the uh, in the taxpayers about this little bridge. And it hasn't been open for quite some time, so I think they'd like to know what's happening with it.
Acting mayor through the councillor, yeah, the councillor is correct, it hasn't been open for a while, um CN built that bridge. Oh, I forget when it was, um the eighteen, eight, nineteen oh five, sorry, it was when it, when the uh, the agreement between the city and CN was. Um, because it used to be actually a road there and CN was widening the tracks, so they created the, with the Wellington overpass over CN. And in return, built the um, the pedestrian bridge, the pedestrian bridge is under CN ownership. Um, a few years ago, we started, we've always done regular minor maintenance on it. A couple of years ago, we started um to include it in our bridge inspections that we have to do biannually. Um, even though it's not our bridge, uh at the time, at the first time we did it in twenty thirteen, we found some structural defects. We let CN know and then we also um narrowed the width of the bridge to to limit the capacity of the bridge. Then again, in twenty seventeen, when we, we did it again, we found further uh deterioration of the structure. Uh, which really kind of made it unsafe and we notified CN and closed the bridge immediately at that time. CN has been uh working on um. A new design of a new uh um bridge replacement, uh we have had a number of meetings with CN staff about it. Uh, we, we're anticipating seeing a preliminary design um soon. Uh, and, but we don't have a timetable of when, when the work will actually be completed yet.
Thanks, Arrow.
Yep.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments on that bridge? Thank you, I'll call the vote, all in favor. Thank you, that's passed unanimously. The next one is the Ux- Duke Street and Given Street reconstruction, but I have a mover on that one. Councillor Atchoni and a secondaire councillor Talbot. Thank you, go ahead councillor Atchoni.
And move by myself that Woodstock City Council award the tender for the reconstruction of Duke Street. And Given Street to Viewcon Construction Limited in the amount of two million one hundred and six thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Inclusive of H S T.
Thank you, are there any questions, comments on that? Thank you, so I'll call them, they vote on that, um all in favor. Thank you. That's unanimous. And the next one is culture services, we have nothing, uh the parks and recreation. Uh municipal support for the massive immunization clinic extension, could I have a motion on that? Councillor Petter. And a secondaire councillor Tate.
I move that Woodstock City Council enter into the amending agreement with Southwestern Public Health. Until May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two to help facilitate the continuation of the mass immunization clinic. And that the agreement be signed to that effect.
Thank you, are there any questions on that? Okay, I'll call the vote, all those in favor. Thank you, that's unanimous. And the economic development, um the additional environment consideration of the phase two at sixteen Graham Street. I could have a motion on that, councillor Atchoni and a secondaire please. Councillor Ta- Talbot, go ahead councillor Atchoni.
Yeah, move by myself that Woodstock City Council authorize an increase in the amount allocated, or sorry allotted. For the necessary environmental assessments of the sixteen Graham Street property, one hundred thousand. And that the funds be drawn from the reserve for capital projects.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments on that? I'll call the vote, all in favor. Thank you, that's uh approved unanimously. Okay. Uh councillor Shadenberg. Councillor Shadenberg, can you hear us? With, we'll take a, a brief recess just to make sure uh that councillor Shadenberg is in the, in the meeting.
I should be good.
Okay, I'll ask, I'll counsel the. Thanks. You there, Mark, everything's good? Okay, thank you. The massive. Yeah, the, oh, he, okay. Yeah. Okay, so we're going to go to, I think we lost Mark at the uh additional um, the sixteen Graham Street. So um councillor Atchoni and councillor Talbot second that motion. And um so is there any uh questions or comments on that particular one? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote, all in favor of that uh recommendation. Thank you, that's uh passed unanimously. So the next one is the um rules of the use of the municipal resources during the election period. Could I have a motion on that councillor Shadenberg and a second. Councillor Petter, go ahead councillor Shadenberg.
Now, the Woodstock City Council approved council policy G A zero-two-eight. Rules for the use of municipal resources during the election period.
Thank you. And the second, we have the secondaire and so, yes councillor Shadenberg.
I guess we'd have to ask our returning officer, better known as our clerk, Amy Humphries, to maybe explain a little bit about what this is. Not only for us to plan on possibly, maybe perhaps running again for the next election, but anyone who's thinking. Of running for the next municipal election, which of course is in October.
Yes, I will ask.
Okay, thank you, acting mayor Lauder through to councillor Shadenberg. So the Municipal Elections Act requires municipalities to establish. Rules and procedures for the use of our municipal resources during the election campaign period. So the proposed policy we have here prohibits the use of any other city Woodstock resources, parks, trails, recreation facilities. Sports fields, services, publications, events, assets, equipment, transit. Um, and any city operated facilities can't be used for any campaigning except as we outline in the policy. The restrictions also include employee participation in campaigning during their working hours as well as the participation of our advisory committees in any campaigning. And really, the purpose and general intent of the policy and the requirement under the act is to ensure the neutrality of our corporation. During that election campaign period, so in this particular case, we're looking for a formalized council policy that we can. Um, send out to all the candidates that are are filing with our office as part of the nomination package. Thank you.
Thank you, are there any questions through to Ms. Humphries? If not, oh councillor Atchoni.
Thank you, through the chair to Ms. Humphries, I I'm just, when I read this, I didn't notice any differences. Is this a difference from years or elections past? So any of us should be aware.
Oh, thank you, acting mayor La- Lauder through to councillor Atchoni's question. Um, I would say the general intent of the policy is very similar to previous years. But what we've done this time is we've made it a little more robust and we've included some more details in it. Um, a lot of it is from feedback from two thousand and eighteen because that was the first year we were required to have this policy. So we came up against a few things that the policy was either silent on or we felt that the policy addressed that it didn't need to. So for example, um we have an exemption in the policy now that says if a candidate has a picture. Um, in a city park, for example, or in front of a city facility, that's okay as part of their campaigning material because it could be, it's really. Um, highlighting our city assets, for example, so those are some things that came up in twenty eighteen that the policy was restricting that we didn't actually necessarily think. Was, was necessary in that case, so very, very similar, but a little more detailed and robust, I would suggest. Does that answer the question?
It does, well, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor. Thank you, that's unanimous. And there's no reports from the chief administrative officer and no reports from human. Um, oh yes, there is one from human resources, there's a motion here uh for council's uh policy. H R zero eighteen Employee Code of Conduct, I could have a motion. Councillor Talbot and a secondaire. Councillor Petter, go ahead councillor Talbot.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve the amendments to council policy H R O eighteen Employee Code of Conduct.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments on that? Okay, I'll call the vote, all those in favor. Thank you, that's unanimous. And there's nothing from the fire services, public works. Uh, there's, we're purchasing uh some pickup trucks, so could I have a motion? Councillor Shadenberg and councillor, councillor Petter second that motion, go ahead councillor Shadenberg.
A Woodstock City Council award a tender for the purchase of two twenty-twenty-two regular cab pickup trucks for Mohawk Ford Sales Limited.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments on that? Okay, I'll call the vote, all in favor. Thank you, that's unanimous. And there's nothing from the information technology. And then uh the special committee and advisor task force reports, there's community grant program for twenty-twenty-two. Councillor Talbot and second by councillor Petter, go ahead councillor Talbot.
I'll move that in accordance with the community grant policy G A zero-zero-three, Woodstock City Council allocates the following grants for the year twenty-twenty-two. Cycles of life supportive transition living one thousand dollars, Special Olympics Ontario Woodstock five thousand dollars. Theater Woodstock on behalf of stages youth theater, three thousand two hundred and fifty, why not us, two thousand five hundred. Woodstock Curling Club five thousand, Woodstock and District Developmental Services five thousand, Woodstock Lawn Bowling Club three thousand. Woodstock Minor Ball Association eight thousand, Woodstock Minor Hockey Association five thousand. Woodstock Navy Des Junior Sea Hockey Club seven thousand, Woodstock Rotary Festival of Music five thousand. Woodstock Triathlon Club Kids Do Committee one thousand.
Thank you councillor Talbot, I do sit on that committee and I uh. Was definitely at the meeting for this and I want to thank the committee, they go to a lot of um. Work going through this and we have, we have a great committee. And they're very thorough in looking through the applications that we do receive. So uh if there's any questions, um I can, uh councillor Shadenberg.
Yes, I just wanted to state that specifically the one from the Woodstock Minor Hockey Association, since I talked to the. Association, uh the president the other days for the April twenty-second to twenty-fourth Ontario Hockey Federation. Under eighteen uh single A championships, which means there'll be hockey teams coming from all over the province that have won. Their zones or divisions, OMHA or Northern Ontario Hockey Alliance, et cetera, all coming to Woodstock on April twenty-second and twenty-fourth that weekend. To compete for the under eighteen uh, uh, the single A championship, so it's a, it's a great tournament to support.
Okay, yes, we had that application and uh they have been waiting on. On an answer on, on uh what we might be able to uh donate, give them on their grant. So um I'm sure that they'll be happy uh regarding this. So I'll call the vote on this, all in favor of the uh motion. Thank you, that's uh passed unanimously. So councillor Tate and has a notice of motion, go ahead councillor Tate.
Yeah, I don't believe I read it at this meeting, I think it's just a notice of motion.
Yeah, she should read it, yeah.
Go, you want me to go ahead and read it?
Yes.
Uh, whereas Oxford County Council was required to complete a review of regional council composition following the regular election in two thousand and eighteen. And whereas such review must either affirm the current council composition or. Change the number of members of its council that represent the lower tier municipalities. And whereas any affirmation of the status quo or change in the number of members that represent the lower tier municipality must be supported through a triple majority approval. That includes Oxford County Council and its area municipal councils. And whereas Oxford County Council advanced the status quo option through the triple majority process and this option failed to achieve triple majority support. And whereas Ingersoll Town Council advanced a weighted voting system option through the triple majority approval process and this option failed. To achieve triple majority support. And whereas the municipal act requires the county council to complete this review with triple majority support within two years commencing. The day the new county council was organized in two thousand and eighteen. And whereas the county council has not complied with this requirement. And whereas the municipal act prescribes, the minister may make a regulation changing the composition of county. Council if the regional municipality fails to comply with this requirement only after the expiration of the. council if the regional municipality fails to comply with this requirement only after the expiration of the two-year period, but before the year of the next regular election, after which the regional municipality has a duty to conduct a review. And whereas the minister in recognition of non-compliance to this requirement has encouraged Oxford County Council to continue, continue working to reach a local consensus for the composition of its council. And whereas the authority under the municipal act for the ministers to make a regulation changing the composition of county council for the two thousand and eighteen term of council as expired. And whereas the municipal act does not require another review of county council composition till the next regular election in two thousand and twenty-six. And whereas the municipal act requires any regulation made by the minister to change the composition of the county council to have regard to the principle of representation by population. And whereas Census two thousand and twenty-one reveals that the current county council composition does not have regard to the principle of representation by population with one county council representing, representing a population as few as seventy-six hundred and another county council representing a population of eighteen thousand six hundred. And whereas for further information, the population representation per county council for each floor tier municipality in Oxford County as follows. Town of Tilsonburg eighteen thousand six hundred and fifteen. City of Woodstock fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight. Town of Ingersoll thirteen thousand six hundred and ninety-three. Township of Norwich eleven thousand one hundred and fifty-one. Township of Zora eight thousand six hundred and twenty-eight. Township, township of East Zora Tavistock seventy-eight forty-one. Township of Southwest Oxford seven thousand five hundred and eighty-three. And whereas population forecasts indicate this disparity in representation will be further eroded with the release of Census two thousand and twenty-six and the next required review of county council composition in two thousand and twenty-six. And whereas the next opportunity for the minister to make a regulation respecting county council composition will be two thousand and twenty-eight. And whereas the failure to comply with the requirement to complete a review of county council composition in two thousand and eighteen term of council should not result in the county council being able to prolong this review as the next deadline, which the minister may make a regulation regarding county council composition will be in two thousand and twenty-eight. And whereas the province has declined to release the recommendations from the regional review and these recommendations could assist with the development of a local resolution to county council composition. Now therefore it be resolved that the county, Woodstock City Council requests that the province impose a deadline for county council to complete a review of county council composition that is supported by a triple majority no later than two years from the date that the new council is organized in two thousand and twenty-two. And further that Woodstock City Council requests the province release the recommendation of the regional government review as it relates to Oxford County. And for that the resolution be circulated to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, sorry. The Honorable Steve Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. The Honorable Ernie Hardiman, Oxford MPP. The County of Oxford and all lower tier municipalities and the County of Oxford.
Thank you councillor Tate. And this will be dealt with at the next meeting, the regular council meeting. Thank you. So the next on our agenda, we're down to the draft bylaws. So councillor Pedder? I think you have the motion on, on the bylaws.
I do. I move by myself, seconded by councillor Talbot, that the following bylaw be given a first and second reading. Ninety-five nineteen dash twenty-two, a bylaw to amend the Woodstock Hydro Legacy Fund Investment Policy.
This one. Oh yeah, that's, yes. Okay, all in favor of that motion? Thank you. The, the third reading?
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Talbot, that the following bylaw be given a third and final reading. Ninety-five nineteen dash twenty-two, a bylaw to amend the Woodstock Hydro Legacy Fund Investment Policy.
Thank you. All in favor of that motion? Thank you. So now we're down to questions and answers of members of council. Start with councillor Accioni.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Lauder. First off, let me start by a big thank you. It was my birthday yesterday and absolutely overwhelmed with all the responses and there's there's no way I can get back to everybody in a timely matter. So I'll apologize right now, but thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Also wearing green today, of course, for Saint Patty's Day. Please don't drink and drive. Have a good time, but please be aware and be smart. That's all I ask. As well as what's on Woodstock, of course, the new march issue is out. Make sure you keep it handy with activities and events coming on. Well, you certainly hope that you stay tuned and get things moving again here in the city. So thanks, everybody, and have a great day. Enjoy the weather.
Thank you. Councillor Talbot?
Just want to say happy Saint Patrick's Day. Get out there and enjoy the weather. I think the last time I checked the temperature, it was nineteen. So we're gonna still have some bad days ahead, but might as well enjoy the good ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Tate?
Yeah, I just want to let council know there's going to be an issue coming forward once again from the county to do with our water. They're trying to take over our water, which would jack our rates and affect our service. But I also want to comment because we have fantastic staff with the City of Woodstock, unionized, non-unionized management. All really good staff. And the staff at county have been treating our water staff absolutely appalling. If you get a chance, go down to the Borough Works, talk to the staff, tell them you have their support because what they've been going through has been terrible. And they need to know that council has their back and this will be coming forward. But just let staff know that we support them and we do have great staff and enjoy the weather. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Pedder?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Connie Lauder. I just want to say that winter is now officially over. I always declare it. You will not see it snow again. I have checked with every rodent across North America. Punxsutawney Phil, Chili Charlie, you name it. They are all in agreement. We're done. It is nineteen degrees, although I'm in a basement, so I can't even see outside. But anyway, trust me, it's over. If it does happen to snow and you want to complain, call Jerry Accioni. He will take all your complaints. I do want to say that it's that time of year when the bikes and the little kids come out. The bikes that they got for Christmas. Now they can't wait to get out on the sidewalk. So please be careful with the little kitties out there. They're running around. I saw them yesterday all over my neighborhood. And we're working on two hour meeting, so I am done. Bye-bye. Oh, happy, thanks. What are we, what are we doing? Drinking green beer? Happy Saint Patrick's Day.
Everybody, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Schadenberg?
Thanks. I guess first and foremost, I want to thank everyone at City Council for the amount of extra work and effort that's gone into sort of trying times over the last couple of months, but most particularly to our acting mayor Connie Lauder. I'll be honest with you. Let's make this sound negative or not, but in, in three years, I, I talk to the mayor very seldomly on the phone about ideas, thoughts, moving things forward or whatever, but I seem to talk to our acting mayor Connie Lauder almost daily on the phone and, and I know what she's, she's going through to keep herself busy in a busy timetable. So it's one of those things, or maybe, maybe delegation down the line, we can all sort of, sort of spread the itinerary around a little bit to, to give Connie some assistance and some help. But the, the other thing I want to mention, of course, and give you is the hockey update. Woodstock Navy Vets, of course, were first place in their, in their seventeen league. And they'll play beginning their semifinals because they had a bye in the quarterfinals. Meaning the semifinals on Tuesday, March the twenty-second at seven forty-five against the Southwood Arena. And I would dare to test anybody who their opponent's going to be because the opponent is TBD to be determined still based on who's still playing in the quarterfinals. So it's Tuesday for the playoffs for the, for the Navy Vets. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I guess it's my turn. The Art in Bloom Call to Artists is now live. Proceeds from the online auction are split evenly between the artists and the Woodstock Art Gallery. All submissions will be accepted through the online registration from submission deadline Wednesday, March twenty-third at twelve P M. Yesterday I was invited to view the donations that have been collected to support the Ukrainian people since the flag raising on March the third. We are certainly a caring community. It is amazing the amount of items collected. A big thanks goes out to Ross Bond and his son Jeff for not only supplying space in their property on Main Street to accommodate the enormous hope pouring of particles, but all the assistance they have provided in helping to arrange the items in the storage area. At this point, all medical supplies, food, new blankets and sleeping bags have been transported for shipment. Each day this week, volunteers have been sorting the remainder of the donations that will be given to the refugees who immigrate to Canada. And Mr Bond has supplied the area as long as it is needed. So it's just wonderful that what he is doing for the community. An apartment building at eight hundred Chieftain donated a carload of medical supplies. A denim donated seventy sleeping bags and they are all brand new. And thanks to the generous business in the city, Food Basics collected four thousand three hundred dollars, which their corporate office is matching before donating that to the Red Cross. Mark's Work Warehouse and winners are collecting donations which will be given to the Red Cross for their humanitarian aid to Ukraine. Appreciation goes out to the citizens of Woodstock and the surrounding communities for the generosity, which is greatly appreciated by the Ukrainian Canadians who are mourning the destruction of Ukraine and the senseless loss of lives. You have brought a smile to their tears. And I want to wish everyone a happy Saint Patrick's Day. And we now have the approval of the budget. So I will read the media release that will be going out. Woodstock, March the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Today, City of Woodstock Council approved the two thousand and twenty-two Revenue Fund Budget supporting approximately eighty-nine million dollars in expenditures for programs and services. In December, Woodstock City Council approved the two thousand and twenty-two Capital Budget which, which allocates twenty-five point seven million for capital projects this year. The approved two thousand and twenty-two Revenue Fund Budget includes a tax levy for city purposes of approximately sixty-four million, which results in a tax rate increase of two point five five percent. The two thousand and twenty-two budget approved today includes a return of recreation and culture programming, summer camps and special events. Additional full-time and part-time staff to manage the workload of our growing city. The conversion of the Market Centre West End for the purpose of the City Hall Annex. Additional bylaw enforcement and security services for downtown Woodstock. Funding for physician recruitment to enhance our programs that attract new doctors to our community. Investments in technology to improve efficiencies. The first increase in transit fares to, since two thousand and sixteen with a twenty-five cent increase to be effective mid-year. This is a budget that marks a return of many of the programs, services and events that we have been unable to offer over the past two years due to the pandemic. This is also a budget that responds to the significant growth of the city. That is being said by myself. The approved two thousand and twenty-two budget will result in an increase of eighty-one dollars and nineteen cents or two point five five percent for the average house assessment compared to two thousand and twenty-one. If you want to contact me on any of this budget, it's Connie Lauder, Acting Mayor, and Connie C. Lauder at thecityofwoodstock.ca. And with that, I'm going to call for an adjournment, but I have a motion to adjourn. Councillor Pedder and seconded by councillor Accioni, all in favor? Thank you.